All right. I want to welcome everyone to our regular call board meeting for March 15th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Before we stand for the pledge of allegiance, I want to take this opportunity to call for a moment of silence for the communities in Ukraine. I know that there are a variety of opinions, thoughts, and politics over these recent events. However, sometimes we need to rise above those reasons and think about those people who live in the communities that are impacted by this devastation. We all believe in and love our own community. I would like to take the next 30 seconds to reflect on those communities in Ukraine, the brave men and women who are defending their communities, and for those in our community who may be impacted by the events in Ukraine. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, before we approve the agenda, I do want to let everybody know that immediately after Superior Spotlight, we will take a three to five minute recess to allow people to leave that don't want to stay for the further meeting and to allow more people to come in. So that will be right after the Superior Spotlight. Do we have a recommended approval for the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second. So moved by Ms. Morrissey, second by Mr. Cleveland. All in favor? The first item up on the agenda is recognitions with Ms. Sarah Taylor.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to be able to recognize these people this evening with us. To start with, in the 2021-22 One Act Play State Championship, which was held on November 13th and November 20 of 2021, Denmark had the honor to showcase their One Act production called Curtains. Following the production, the final results, we had one outstanding student from Denmark High School that was recognized as the best actor, Tony Webb. Please help me recognize Tony as he joins us for the recognition. If you are here to support Tony, family or friends, please stand up and be recognized. And then we have our music teacher, Mr. Kritzel, and the parents, Kim and Frank Webb. Next, we would like to spotlight our Employee of the Month, Cafeteria Manager at North Forsyth High School, Kay Tidwell. We have three fine print pages of all your recognitions. So I could not, I could not blow it up, so you're going to have to bear with me. But I'm not going to read it into the comments, but I do want to highlight a few so that you can see the appreciation and how valued Ms. Kay is at North Forsyth High School. Ms. Kay has had many hurdles over the past few years, and she has handled them well. She has learned ways to provide when supplies were limited. She has managed the kitchen well with her team when they were out with COVID and mourning the loss of a woman of her own. She has been a constant source of leadership, love, and support throughout it all. Ms. Kay has had quite a few hurdles to throw at her over the past few years. She has overcome and excelled under the pressure. She has continued to learn from her team and feed the students even with shortages and unpredictable schedules, and take care of staff through many trials and tributes. She has a smile on her face and a come-on attitude for all the privilege of working with her. She is the light of our building and has truly made North Forsyth High School a better place. Another one. Kay has the most genuine person. She makes working here easy, and she loves Raider Nation with all her heart. Kay deserves this honor as she embodies the servant spirit that her students, staff, and community need. She loves everyone and embraces my, embraces the students each and every year. I love working right next door to her and appreciate all that she and her staff have done in our school year. Ms. Kay not only goes above and beyond for the food department, but she continuously engages in students in a personal level. She even offers coffee talk with Ms. Kay session during Raider time that allows students to simply unwind and talk. Kay loves her cafeteria workers, teachers, and all staff and students as she comes with a willing smile. She's made it not only through the loss of a beloved coworker, but also a close friend member, and still remains upbeat and positive. She does not have to put on a show. She is who she is, and I am confident that I speak for all of us when we say we love Ms. Kay. She is humble and does not seek to be recognized, but I cannot imagine anyone who would be more deserving of an employee and the Month honor. And the last one, Kay Tidwell has always, always the qualities that we would want in employee regardless of her job or position. Kay has pursued continuous learning by participating and graduating from the Class A Leadership Program and has transferred the learning and her leadership to her own staff here at North Forsyth High School. She is developed a growing leader with her kitchen staff. These opportunities benefit the staff as they continue to grow and aspire to advanced leadership positions within our school and system. Kay Tidwell has been a rock of stability at North Forsyth High School during the last two years in this very difficult time of the pandemic for all of us. Feeding, taking care of our students and staff was her top priority through all the challenges in staffing, supply chain issues, illnesses, and feeding very large numbers of students each day. Kay is at North Forsyth, is North Forsyth High School. Sorry, Mr. Paul. She.
She is North Forsyth.
She loves the school and will work to do whatever she needs necessary to make sure that our kids have what they need. I can speak from firsthand experience that I was needed to help in the serving line for the first three weeks at the beginning of the school year. The organization, planning, and follow-through it takes to serve these mills takes a very special person and a leader, and that's Kay Tidwell. Congratulations. If you are here to support Kay, family and friends, would you please stand up so we can recognize you? And last but not least, it is truly my honor and my privilege to recognize our servant and supportive board members this month as, as we recognize Board of Education members. So I just want to say, I'm not reading from the script, but our board members have been truly supportive of our school district. We could not have done it without each of you. And I know that you give so much of all the meetings you attend, all the parents that you listen to, all the staff members that you have met with numerous times, and we really do appreciate it and everything that you have given back to our school district. So you're going to give them to, okay. So Wes McCall, Board Chair, District 1. Morrissey, Board Vice Chair, District 2. Lindsay Adams, Board Member, District 5. Tom Cleveland, Board Member, District 3. And Darla Light, Board Member, District 4, which happens to be my district. And if you're here to support our board members, would you please stand up and recognize them for all the hard work that they have done? Thank you. I think next is South Forsyth Middle School with their Superior Spotlight.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here. Again, we just want to say thank you for serving on our board. We know how much, how supportive you are for, for all the things that we are, all the different initiatives that we are moving forward with, and we're very grateful. So I have my administrative team here today and our presenting tonight are Danielle Sherfy, one of our administrators, and Mr. Sean Danzy, one of our students. And they're going to tell you a little bit about our student voice and choice. When I first came to South Forsyth Middle and interviewing the students, I found that they really, and you know, you do round robin interviews and you get to know, kind of get your finger on the pulse of what the students need. And the students were saying that although they loved South and they loved all the opportunities that were there, they were hungry for a little bit more voice in some of the decisions that were made. And of course, we can't let students have carte blanche decisions. That would be absolute, like absolutely crazy, and we didn't want to have bedlam. And so we were very strategic in identifying ways that we could include student voice and choice in, in the major decisions that we made within the school. And so I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Sherfy, Ms. Danielle Sherfy, and she is going to present to you how we have been able to incorporate student voice into South Forsyth Middle.
Hello. Thank you for inviting us to present something that we are very proud of at South Forsyth Middle, and that is connecting through student voice. So before we share all the avenues that we have developed over the course of the last couple of years of student voice, I wanted to share a little background of how we got there. In the 2021 school year, we actually attended a professional learning opportunity from the county with Ken Williams. He is a well-known educational leader, but also an author, and specializes in school climate and culture. When we were in this meeting, he discussed with us the difference between being a school and becoming the school. And one of those, or three of those things were three important questions that you needed to ask your, your whole community. So one question was, what do we want school to provide our children? The second question was, what do we want school to provide other people's children? And then the third question was, well, how do we bridge that gap? So after this, we met as an admin team and said, we really believe in this work, and we want to get that input from not only our staff, but from our students. We started with putting together a diverse and innovative group of teachers together to build our leadership team, which we called ARI. And ARI stands for Aligning, Envisioning, Reconnecting, Integrating, and Exploring, which is what we planned on doing with student voice. We asked our teachers to these three questions, and we came up with their answers and put it into a word bubble, which then allowed us to see the common themes. So the bigger the word, the more teachers said that when we asked them the three questions. Then we said, okay, let's ask our students those three questions. So we went to our student advisory, and we asked those three questions, and there were their answers. For our students, it was being connected. For our teachers, it was growth, confidence, exploring, loved, and safe. So we used those words to then develop the mission that we were on, because another thing that Ken said to us was, mission statements are just mission statements. We actually have to be on that mission. So we went forward with South Forsyth Middle School is on a mission to provide quality learning for all students to grow in a connected, supported environment. And this is our mission that we are constantly on. Whenever we do something different at the school or we're reevaluating, we come back to this and make sure that that's falling in line with what we want for our students. Even though this is exactly what we want for all of our students, we knew that this was a big task, and we wanted to chunk it off. And we know that starting with connection is the best place to start. If a student's not feeling connected to the building, then everything else is a little bit harder to attain. So we focused our efforts on how we can get connected by building connection through voice or having a sense of belonging and pride in our school. We knew that giving students a chance to have voice in our school would help promote the goals that we wanted to achieve. We tapped into student voice through multiple avenues, but one that we are very proud of is our student advisory group. So our student advisory group is made up of 20 students from each grade level who are diverse in their backgrounds, their interests, and their involvement within the school. To speak more about this, I would like to introduce Sean Danzy, a student advisory member.
Hello. My name is Sean, and I'm a current seventh grade student at South Forsyth Middle School. I'm excited to discuss with the board why student advisory is an important part of our school. During a typical student advisory meeting, we come into the media center classroom and sit with other members in a circle. During this time, we eat pizza and discuss current school topics as well as give feedback on elements of South Forsyth Middle School. Some examples of topics that we help solve are dismissal procedures, timing for Friday Academy, and flex/ Eagle Time choice. Student advisory meetings allow a variety of students from each grade level to discuss possible solutions for improving the school culture and environment. Being a part of student advisory helps me feel like I'm continuing to make South a great place to be for all students and teachers. This group has helped provide a connection between the school and students by allowing our voices to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. On this slide, you will see some school topics that have been discussed during these meetings. Many of these items, like transitions between arrival and dismissal, lunchroom procedures, and student and staff recognition, have been items that we've been able to discuss, get feedback from students, and then make immediate changes to. Other items, we were getting feedback on and we're making plans for the next year with student voice involved. Student advisory isn't the only way that we are promoting connection. We intertwine student voice and connection through lots of different options. One of those is sources of strength, where we are actually training our students to be peer leaders in the building, and they are going to lead the work that we will start next year with our PBIS program. We have our DECA and FBLA students help run our student store. We conduct empathy interviews twice a year to just check in with students and see how things are going and get feedback from them. Finally, we want to share and leave you with this video to show you all the wonderful ways that we are promoting connection at South Forsyth Middle School.
Being connected means that you work together as a team.
Being connected means to, what it means to me is being able to trust one another and being able to learn and have friendships and being able to rely on another person.
My teachers and my classmates.
The teachers, I love my teachers, and just what we do here at South Forsyth. Kids, I love them.
So thank you so much for letting us present something that we are very proud of. Do you have any questions?
Say on the board, have a question?
I just have one. I'm curious, now that you've had the chance to sit down as a group of students and talk about things like dismissal and arrival time and procedures, has it helped you at all maybe understand the administration side of rules and why they might be strict? Is it maybe improved behavior a little bit as well? Good to have that conversation?
Yeah, because like for the, for the dismissal part, like the hallways aren't as crowded as they used to be and all compacted, where everyone isn't like shoving each other and stuff. Yeah.
It's good to have those conversations, though. Hear other people's views.
Sometimes we have to shut you down, right? Sometimes they come up with solutions and we're like, no, that doesn't work because, and then they're very good. They try to poke holes sometimes in some of our reasoning, and that's, that shows that they're critically thinking. And so we are, we very much, they're very respectful when they, when they do that. So we welcome that feedback, and it really kind of has become a more, like, I don't know, I feel like we have a great relationship with student advisory, and they're not afraid to tell us how they feel about different procedures, are you?
That's fixed.
They are creative problem solvers, yes.
Teach them when they're in the workplace how to work with each other and express opinions and come to a solution. So that's great. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. At this time, we'll take like a three-minute recess to allow those that want to leave to leave, and then those outside to come inside. Oh, I got two. There you go. Help you out.
Hey, my man. What's going on? Are you speaking?
I'm speaking.
Oh, God, don't throw me under the bus.
I'm not.
Yeah. Let me do anything. You look good. You look great. Scorecard?
Yeah, no. And it passed. It was, it was great. But. It was. It really was.
Where are you getting coming? You're in.
From the state. So.
Good for you. Well, that would think that's a pretty strong back from the front. See? I'm looking forward to hearing these pieces.
Folks, if y'all would go ahead and begin moving to your seats, and let's get ready to take order again. If you are a speaker, it's okay that you not sit in your seat right now. We should have plenty, but let's go ahead and move to them, please.
Okay, we're going to continue with today's board meeting. In front of you, we have the consent agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the items on the consent agenda? Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to move by Mr. Cleveland, second by Mrs. Morrissey. All in favor? So the next item on the agenda is a presentation discussion items with finance report with Mr. Larry Hamel.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to discuss the February 2022 financial statements. As always, we keep goal three in mind, strategic plan. We began the month with about $199 million in cash. As you can see, we brought in about $29 million in cash receipts. And of course, this time of the year, we're always spending more money than we're bringing in, and we spent almost $45 million to bring our cash balance down to about $183 million. On the year-to-date budget report for revenue detail, we are at 80.2% collections. We're on pace where we need to be, and we only have about 101,000 left to collect. On the expenditure side, we're at 64.87%. We're on pace where we were last year, and we have about 183 million, almost 184 million, not counting commerces, left to spend on our budget for the year. Majority of that is salaries and benefits. On the debt service cash analysis, you can see that we have a robust debt service cash account balance of $50 million going into the February 1st, excuse me, getting ready for the August payments. SPOS 5 will end this month. This will be the last month collections. That should put us over $50 million in that cash balance. And the SPOS 5 Treasury Fund is just a little bit of money left over from a treasury transaction for the year. So we have a total of about $98.8 million in there to pay debt. Special revenue funds, this is a combination of all the other funds, like your federal funds, local state funds, and school activity funds, excuse me, nutrition account funds. And that budget is revised at 13.3. This changes and goes up and down as we get into the new budget periods for the different federal programs, and we got about $6 million of that or almost a little more than 50% left to spend. On capital projects, currently, we have a balance on there of about $34 million. School nutrition right now is about, almost up to 10.5. We just found out yesterday, or was it Monday, that the federal government will stop the complete free reduced meals starting July 1st of this year. They would not continue it.
We going to communicate that to the public? Let them know?
Right. Tim will probably be getting with all the schools and the principals, and they'll probably communicate. I'll double check with them, though. On investment summary, currently, we have about 194, almost 195 million dollars in investments. And as you can see, the 306, 317, 353 fund and the 354 fund have all spent down greatly where they were this time last year. On the SPOS 5, you can see there's the February collections in there. March will be the last month we collect. We will probably be hitting, once we're all said and done, we got two more payments to collect. That will be February and the month of March as well. We'll probably add $8 million to that number, so we should be around 212 to 214, depending on how it's all said and done. Any cash balance for your elementary schools, about 4.5. It's normal. Activity is back to normal. Both your middle school and your high school balances are. Both your middle school and your high school balances are back to normal, and the activity in those accounts as well is back to normal compared to where you were during the pandemic. As you can see, we have a total of about $12.6 million in the school accounts, the majority of that's in the high school at 49%, followed by elementary at 36, and the middle at 15. And those are the financial statements for 2022, any questions, please?
Any questions?
For the, the balance of the SPOS 5, does that go, did you say there would be 15? Where was that, where would that dollars go?
So, the SPOS 5 account, the $48 million now, plus the next two payments we get, those are the funds that in the SPOS 5 referendum, were going to be the funds left over after all the bond payments have been made, and there was a paragraph in there on how that money was to be spent, and so, we will follow that guidelines on how that money is to be spent.
All right, no more questions? Thank you, Mr. Hamel. The next item is action items, and there are none, so we are going to move to our public participation. Before we go into public participation, I do want to take this opportunity to go ahead and read the rules and guidelines. The board policy, BCBI, set forth the rules for public participation, and copies are available on the back table. Public participation is designed to allow citizens to speak directly to the board, and board members do not respond during this part of the agenda. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Ms. Abbott will raise a yellow sign when you have 30 seconds left, and a red sign when your time is up. We want to remind our citizens that public participation is to present issues or concerns to the board, but in doing so, we do not allow profane comments or comments which involve inappropriate public subjects. If your comments, including anything you might read, is inappropriate to be instated in public, you will be stopped from saying it or reading it. I will maintain an orderly public participation process during this public meeting. As chairman, I am asking that you please be respectful of each other and our guidelines. We will have different views, and that is okay. We show that it is okay by being respectful to each other. So, our first speaker is Mr. Jerry Kerschel. Also, if I mispronounce your name, I don't do it in a disrespectful way, and I apologize. Please come up and correct me and let me know that I had the proper way to pronounce your last name.
So, it's Jer, like there, except with a J?
J.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
Last month, we heard a lot regarding age inappropriate, and age inappropriate sexual materials in our school libraries. We had a bunch of very concerned mothers asking for greater consideration of the parental prerogatives, and we also had some very concerned children worried about author diversity. The claim that the sexually explicit books were actually being targeted because their authors were minorities just isn't believable. There are all sorts of minority authors with conservative viewpoints that would be warmly welcomed by concerned parents. Dave Rubin, Larry Elder, Thomas Sowell, Dinesh D'Souza, Candace Owens, and Ben Shapiro are all well-respected minority voices, and their books are not at all sexually explicit. These gay, black, female, immigrant, and Jewish voices represent a wide swath of superficial diversity metrics, but also represent strong conservative values. If there is a concern for the lack of diverse authors, let's join together in identifying books for minority authors that are not sexually explicit and represent conservative values. As for access to sexually explicit materials, let's acknowledge the fears of both sides. If you put parents in control of what is age appropriate, you could see some parents abuse that control. Some parents might groom children into underage sexual activity by normalizing underage sexuality. Some parents may repress their children's exploration of sexuality and sexual identity. Some parents may even go so far as to hormonally and surgically abuse their children before their age of consent, leading to permanent body changes, sterility, and other negative health outcomes for children who would otherwise live happy homosexual or gender nonconforming lives. If you put schools in deciding of what is age appropriate, you could also see some of those same problems. Some schools may groom children into underage sexual activity by normalizing underage sexuality. Some schools may destroy the age of innocence by forcing unwanted explorations of sexuality and sexual identity on children unready for those burdens. Some schools may even go so far as to promote the hormonal and surgical abuse of children before their age of consent, leading to permanent body changes, sterility, and other negative health outcomes for children who would otherwise live happy homosexual or gender nonconforming lives. Both options can lead to very bad outcomes, and by recognizing that, we can at least have some common ground between both sides. Despite the risks either way, the only rational path forward is putting parents in control. My father had a trick to keep me and my brother from fighting, he'd give us a candy bar and have one of us split it in half, and have the other one choose which have to get. It worked no matter who split it, and no matter who chose which to have to take. With an education system currently dominated by left-wing activists, people on the left might think it's a great idea to take away parental control, but once that precedent is set and the pendulum swings back the other direction, leftist parents are going to be very unhappy with conservative education systems imposing controls on their children. Ultimately, this can be solved fairly with technological parental controls, giving parents notification and opt-in mechanisms for specific library books for specific ages. This isn't a perfect solution, but it is one that works no matter whose ideology is dominant in the school system, protecting everyone from potential abuse. Until such a system is in place, I respectfully ask the board members to work on expediting and prioritizing the removal of sexually explicit materials from our school libraries. Thank you very much for your time, and again, if there's anyone who disagrees with me, I'd love to have one for you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ariani DePada.
It's Ariani, thank you.
Ariana.
Yeah.
DePada, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm reading the following statement on behalf of a current educator in the Forsyth County Schools. I am an educator and I am exhausted. Before you make your own conclusion on my exhaustion or tell me it's part of the job, let me tell you what the cause is not. It is not due to my students, they are incredible middle schoolers who have proven to be resilient, open-minded, eager to grow, and willing to learn new things. It is not because I'm a new teacher, I have been an educator for 18 years, I have taught multiple subjects and grades. It is not because I'm experiencing teacher burnout. I look forward to coming to work, I absolutely love my job. It is not because of COVID protocols or lack thereof. COVID-19 has touched us all in one way or another, and teaching during a pandemic has been difficult and will continue to be so. So, what is the cause of my exhaustion? Lack of trust in educators who are professionals, ridiculous accusations, and trying to stop intellectual freedom. A short time ago, teachers were the heroes who were able to pivot during the height of the pandemic and teach virtually. Parents realized and saw firsthand how much teachers truly did in the classroom for their children. They were more than eager to get their students back in the class face-to-face. Despite the challenges and risk this brought to us teachers, we two new students needed to be back in our classrooms. Being in our class, students received what parents said their children so desperately needed, academics, social interactions, and an emotionally stable and safe place. Students came back, and we all adjusted to a new normal. In fact, parents praised Dr. Bearden for not mandating masks, and sang his, and the Board of Education's praises for what they saw as a smooth transition. Now, suddenly, teachers, schools, Dr. Bearden, and the Board of Education are the bad guys trying to indoctrinate our students and lead them wayward. Need examples? I have two in particular, DEI. Why do we not want our youth to appreciate diversity, have equity, and support inclusion? If you find yourself telling your children to be kind, treat others with respect, friend the friendless, follow the golden rule, then you two believe in DEI. This is not a program, but how we as humans beings should live and act, ensuring that our youth is treated fairly, and knowing that all people are people and deserve the same opportunities embodies what America stands for. Banning of books. Please stop saying that you are not banning books, what, books that parents can still buy, those books if they want to for their children. This statement alone shows you do not understand the meaning of censorship, the economic status of the community as a whole, or the ramification of your actions. Using the reasoning of sexually explicit is not valid when you do not read the entire book, but instead, you follow it to look for key words that offend you. In fact, there's not an agreed-upon definition of what sexually explicit, a book needs to be, thank you.
Thank you, Ariani. Our next speaker is Patricia Wall.
Good evening. We're not here to debate specific titles brought before this group by a noisy minority. It is about adherence to policy and First Amendment rights. The point we are making is, is that titles come and go, but the Supreme Court ruling remains firm even if changes are made to establish policy. In a New York community called Island Trees, a school board took it upon themselves to remove books from the school library because they were told by an ultra-conservative parent group led by people outside the district that the book's contents were described as containing indecent matter, vulgarities, profanities, explicit descriptions of sex acts, et cetera. Thus became the case referred to as PICO versus Island Trees Board of Education, a groundbreaking Supreme Court First Amendment case that still stands today. Five junior and senior high school students sued the school board for removing nine books from the school library. One of the young litigants in this case said he doubted that any of the board members read the books, they just focused on specific passages. Sound familiar? He also noted that these book titles were from an outside group with a list in hand who then went searching to see if any of these books on the list were in the school libraries. Also sound familiar? Justice Brennan in the ruling stated, "Students do not shed their constitutional rights to freedom of speech or expression at the schoolhouse gate, and such rights may be directly impacted or implicated by the removal of books from the shelves of a school library on their own personal, based on their own personal dislike of the content." The board overlooked the First Amendment in this case, which included the right to read library books of the students' choosing. Such access prepares students for active participation in the diverse society in which they will soon be adult members. The Georgia State Board of Education has a policy for challenged materials and requires the same of every school district. Any changes must include that all members of the committee read the book in its entirety, this is critical. Then they convene to discuss the merits, recognizing that each school cluster is a separate and unique community, meaning that one decision should not apply to all. And by the way, common sense media and Amazon are not recognized as professionally vetted reviewers. To do less than this is to shortchange students and other stakeholders. We know that this board recognizes the importance of students' First Amendment rights. In fact, it appears in the board policy and states, "All media center users have a First Amendment right to read, view, and listen to library resources." And goes on to state, "Parents or guardians have the right to guide the reading of their children, but must give the same right to other parents and guardians." In other words, your child, not someone else's. Nowhere in the policy does it allow the superintendent or board, the ultimate authority, to remove any books from libraries without going through a complete state-approved board policy. The Supreme Court's decision stands firm. This is our position, and our policy was not followed.
Thanks, Ms. Wall. Our next speaker is Kathleen Krainic.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Krainic, and tonight, I'm honored to read a statement from one of our educators who does not enjoy the privilege of being able to speak freely at this meeting. They wrote, "Forsyth County is my chosen home. As a transplant, one of the characteristics that drew my family here nearly 20 years ago was this community's ability to embrace positive progress, and we've all seen ways our county has changed for the better. Even still, there are areas sorely in need of reformation, and one is the narrow lens through which some of our neighbors see our world. More so, there is dire need for the elected Board of Education to broaden their views and actions to meet the needs of all constituents, not just those in the noisy minority. The first issue I implore you to consider is the swift and seemingly non-guided removal of books that a few adults demanded to be banned from our school media centers. Not only does this hasty decision diminish critical thinking opportunities for students, but it speaks volumes to the board's willingness to cater to those who lack evidence-based logical arguments or true understanding of analytic reading. This must change. You were elected in good faith to uphold and promote what is best for all students. The reactionary biased removal of books lacked appropriate following of protocol, and it must be remedied. Related, and potentially more important, is that the literary content that seems most objectionable to Mary in the library has evaded the baseline necessity of Mary even reading it. What has happened yet again in our community is our elected officials have chosen to favor those who demand out of ignorance while they disregard and disenfranchise the diverse contingency of students, educators, families, taxpayers, voters, citizens, the very humans they represent. The works of literature you have ripped from the hands of learners have a common thread. They overwhelmingly represent characters and/or are written by authors who are LGBTQ+ Black and women. We know all too well Forsyth County's history regarding its Black residents. It is no secret Forsyth County Schools works with prejudice against students and staff members of the LGBTQ+ communities. The ties that bind the banned books to long-held biases are tightly wound. Nevertheless, it is time to break free from those ties with long overdue human decency and respect. The board's choice based on one call from a concerned parent hearkens to historical events sparked from lack of intelligent decision-making like the Catholic Church and its index of prohibited books. Thankfully, we have largely moved on since that time, and our students benefit from works by authors such as John Milton, Victor Hugo, and Voltaire. But imagine where any educator training program would be without banned authors like Rousseau, Locke, and Descartes. My message began on a positive note, and it is with the same perspective that I hope to proceed. That rests largely on how this board chooses to represent each student and community member that they serve in our county. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Krainic. Our next speaker is Catty Gates. Katie, okay, Gates not here. Abigail DeJohn?
We didn't hear the name, you called first, sir.
Catty Gates, she's not here. Abigail DeJohn? Caroline Andrews?
Hi, my name is Caroline Andrews, and I'm just going to ask a simple question. If it can't be read in the Forsyth County Schools boardroom, why is it on the shelves of a Forsyth County School library? I mean, that's really what it comes down to, right? There are people in the library who I disagree with politically. There are religious opinions by people who call themselves Christians, who probably are, that I disagree with. I'm not upset about that. If it's porn, if it's obscenity, our kids should not be allowed to read it. It's as simple as that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Angie Darnell.
Good evening, I'm a newbie, this is my first time speaking, so I rode a lot, I'll talk fast, I promise. I did want to address what Caroline just said. One of the reasons we can't read that out loud or in school is we have cameras on right here, and you can't say certain things on television to be broadcast all over. Books are opened and read to themselves, they couldn't be read out loud in the classroom either. I just wanted to mention that. Okay. You cannot be one of the strongest school systems in this state without exceptional educators, staff, and administrators. Our four children have gone through Forsyth County Schools, our youngest is a senior this year. As a parent volunteer and parent-teacher organization member, I've served on boards with parent-teacher boards in my son's middle school, and I was so thankful for the staff in their schools and the programs that helped all students achieve success. I saw it firsthand for the 21 years we've lived here. We all set boundaries for our children when we allow them a smartphone or a laptop. Developing trust and boundaries is part of parenting for all of us. We all want to keep our children safe from harm, and technology has certainly complicated that. It has also helped drive everything that has been discussed here in this room for many months. We are expressing misplaced concern. If a parent is upset at content or subject matter in a book, library books are far less accessible than anything a child can scroll and find online. A library book cannot jump off a shelf into your child's hands. An approval process and audit by another committee of already-approved library books seems rather redundant in the grand scheme of priority, but it can certainly continue to create a great deal of emotion and protest when book after book after book can be targeted because of content. I've never been compelled to speak at a board meeting until the last many months. I decided to try to understand the national upset over public schools curriculum and program with research. A very active national campaign to target public schools as indoctrination centers of sexuality and harmful programs has been ongoing. The upset over books and curriculum has been impactful because of social media, and the media campaign to drive a the media campaign to drive a particular demographic to fight to save children. Special interests know what will make a targeted audience angry, scared, and ignite fear and where to find them. Documentaries have been produced with the narrative that public schools are dangerous. Diversity and inclusion is an attempt to brainwash. Social and emotional learning is mental health care. Public schools have Marxist agendas. All of these are talking points that have been repeated here on the Internet and in national media. The messengers of these claims are trusted resources to many. I question ultimate intent. The truth is Forsyth County schools are not broken, and I believe most parents would like to keep it that way. I know many parents of all political stripes and faith, and I asked many of them a lot of questions before I came here tonight. Overwhelming concern is the attack on public schools nationally.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Amber Lyons.
Hi. My name is Louisa Jackson, and Amber was not able to make it today, so I'll be speaking.
Can we do that? No, we're not going to be able to allow that because the participation form was signed by Ms. Lyons, not by you. So I'm sorry, we're not going to be able to do that. But you can come back next month and fill out that information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cassie King.
Good evening. Thank you for offering the community an opportunity to be heard regarding book banning in our public schools. I am aware that the final decision has been made in regards to the eight books that the county has removed to date. I understand that now subcommittees are being created to further review books that people in the community deem inappropriate. I support every parent's choice to parent their children how they see fit until it impacts community safety. I deem inclusivity, sexuality, and gender identity community safety issues. The books that have been removed were predominantly LGBTQIA books. I know this as I read all the books prior to the meeting so I could be fully prepared and not judging the book's contents based on out-of-context excerpts. This becomes a safety issue for our LGBTQIA children because it clearly demonstrates to students and community members that they are not valid, that they are not wanted, and they should be removed, just as the books have been. Most of you here are not aware of the importance of representation in media because you are the faces of the media. Marginalized communities need to see themselves represented in our schools and in our schools' libraries. I was here for the first meeting, and it was clear that many of the objections were religiously based. I fully support anyone's religious beliefs and their ability to practice those beliefs, but this is a public school. This is not a private religious school that I've selected for my children. This is a public school, and it needs to be a place that is inclusive for all members of society and not just the ones that hold the same beliefs and ideals as you. Freedom of religion is also my freedom from your religion. I do not subscribe to the same beliefs as many of you, but that does not make my opinion less valid. When I come to these meetings, it often feels like I'm screaming into the void, and it's pointless, but I will continue to scream that our children deserve representation. So please, when you are making these committees, keep in mind that the community is made up of all kinds of people. They deserve to be seen. They deserve to be supported, and they deserve representation in our libraries. I'm sure many of you think that it's not a big deal that these books were removed from the library because they discuss things that make you uncomfortable. What I see as the major issue here is that we are sending a powerful message to our children, and they're listening. Statistically speaking, there are some parents here that will eventually find out that your children are gay. Those children see you, and they hear what you say about people just like them. I will continue to fight against the prejudice displayed here from some of you. My children will know that I will fight for them no matter what. They are loved, wanted, and important to me, so I implore you to seek diversity in the community selection process. Transparency will also go a long way in bringing the community together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Our next speaker is Sawyer Kovacs.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sawyer Kovacs. I am a junior at Columbus State University, and I have some bad news. Just like last time I was here, I am still single. Now, from what I'm hearing tonight, everyone here in this room, they, you know, they -- I won't put this up. From what I'm hearing tonight, everyone in this room cares about their children and their education. And I understand that there are books that are out there that may contain material that some might find disturbing, but the world is full of pornography, war, rape, and racism, and there's nothing that we can do to protect our children and guarantee that they won't be exposed to this content. A prime example is sexual immorality. Between the ages of 11 and 17, one in three girls are victims of rape, and they don't find the courage to tell someone about it and get the help that they need. Always also find sexual immorality, and they're not taught about sexual purity and how to control their urges through a parental figure. So where do these behaviors come from? Currently, the Internet is a prime example. It's the primary go-to. One in three children have access to the Internet by five, and the Internet is not a good educator, being a gateway to addictions and horrors that should never be put in such young minds. We should be giving our children books that would enhance their knowledge and just give them a wider understanding. But most important is that we need to give them face-to-face communication and have them taught by ourselves from their parents with the wisdom and knowledge that we have. And without it, the world will kill them, which is why we need to teach them about topics such as race, sex, and war throughout history. We'll be better preparing them for a future that they can thrive in. I want to help start these conversations, and so I'm not a parent, but I am a father of Christ, and I help students find how Christ works in their lives. If you have questions or want some of my number, I will be outside for a short time after this, so to give my advice. Lord, protect our children. Give our parents the tools to educate. Amen, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kovac. Our next speaker is James Liming. Liming, right?
Liming.
Liming, I'm sorry, Liming.
It's fine.
So James Liming.
Hello, my name is James Liming. My pronouns are they/them, and I am a junior at Denmark High School. The point everyone in this whole book banning argument is ignoring is that teenagers will have sex whether or not these books are in these libraries. I'm not trying to be gross. I'm not trying to be gross or perverted. I'm just being realistic. So instead of arguing for or against banning these books, I'm just going to convey some information. Seventy-five percent of pregnancies among 15 through 19-year-olds are unplanned. Only about 50% of teen mothers receive high school diplomas by age 22, when 90% of women who don't give birth during adolescence graduate from high school. Complications during pregnancy and childbirth are the leading cause of death for 15 through 19-year-old girls globally. Children of teenage mothers are more likely to have lower school achievement and to drop out of high school. Now, don't get me wrong, these books are not teaching the readers how to have sex, but given the state of the current sexual education in Forsyth County, having books that focus on more than abstinence and teach actual sexual health would not be the worst thing in the world. Another point that these arguments seem to leave out is that a lot of the sexual activity in these books are actually sexual assault. This should not be treated the same as sex because it just normalizes the behavior. One in 10 high school girls reported being forced into sex. More than one-third of acquaintance rape victims are between the ages of 14 and 17. Teenagers account for more than 51% of all reported sexual abuse. Thirty-one percent of sexual assaults against youth happen in the survivor's home, 24% in their neighborhood, and 44% in their school. These books don't teach children how to sexually assault other children. These books teach children that it's okay to speak out about their uncle or their friend or their teacher doing inappropriate things to them. If youth read books about people standing up against their assaulter, they will feel brave enough to speak out against their own, or at least realize what's happening to them isn't their fault, and they're not dirty for it. Before I get to closing this, I just want to address something that has been said today in some of these topics. I have been on testosterone for two and a half years, and it's not abuse. It is necessary medical treatment. Hormones, not abuse. And being against these books is being against education. I'd like to end with a quote from Laurie Hals Anderson, the author of the book Speak. "Censorship is the child of fear and the father of ignorance."
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert McLaughlin.
Members of the board, the philosopher Jean Jacques Rousseau presumed that the natural state of mankind is freedom. He was dead wrong. In fact, the natural state of mankind is poverty. Prosperity and freedom are unnatural. They require hard work, discipline, high moral standards, and a solid education. My father understood this truth well. His alcoholic stepfather dragged the family down into the swamp of poverty. But by the grace of God and with the help of his teachers, Dad went to college at age 16. He worked for the same employer 34 years, was married to my mom 59 years, and thereby gave a much better life to my sisters and myself than what he himself had been given. In short, my dad climbed up out of that swamp of poverty onto solid ground. He led me upwards along the mountain path so that my kids in turn may reach the summit and my future grandkids may reach the stars. I hope that kids today who struggle, who live in poverty, can become like my dad. They can be the ones their descendants remember as the ones who lifted their family up out of poverty and upwards to better things. Last month, we heard how the Principal of Coming Elementary and the Moral Foundation have been helping local kids to do exactly that, giving them a helping hand along that steep trail that leads upwards to prosperity and freedom. Members of the board, it makes no sense for our schools to lift kids up with a helping hand in elementary years only to kick them back down towards the swamp in their teen years, but that is exactly the danger we face today. The unholy marriage of Marxist critical theory and postmodern philosophy has conceived ideologies that deny the existence of objective truth, place subjective feelings above objective reality, and proclaim that standards of moral and behavior are nothing more than attempts by one group in power to oppress everyone else. Thus, we have critical race theory, which in the sheep's clothing of DEI threatens to infiltrate our schools. And likewise, sexually explicit books have already infiltrated school libraries. Kids who are climbing up that hard path up towards the mountaintop need to focus on their goal. When their hormones kick in during puberty, they can't afford to be dragged down and consumed by their own lust because they were told that self-control is oppression. They can't afford to give up because they've been told they're oppressed and this hard work means nothing. They can't risk diverting their energy into hatred of so-called oppressors when the need to focus their efforts on an education can lead to a better life. Members of the board, protect our kids. Put a stop to critical race theory and remove inappropriate materials from school libraries. Instead, demand excellence incessantly so that all Forsyth kids may overcome poverty and reach the stars. We've been talking about these issues for nearly a year now, so I have to ask, are you the ones to do the job, or must we seek others who will go up there and produce results? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Allison Strickland.
Hello. I'm a concerned mom of three minor children. Number eight of your public participation policy states that speakers are asked to keep their remarks civil, profane, rude, defamatory remarks, and personal attacks will not be allowed. Nowhere does it say that you cannot read from a book found in a school building. In fact, the mere fact that it is available in any school building means it is fair game to read on any FCS property. Yet, a concerned parent was gavelled three words into an excerpt from a book you all have made available to our children, and the reasoning was because minors were present in the room. You will have to forgive us all for being confused. Are they appropriate for minors, or are they not? After a very large turnout of concerned parents last month, this board, which was elected by those very parents, chose to then attend the March 8th work session and flat-out lie about the findings and mock those parents. Kristen Morrissey stated that there were only 10 to 15 books in question when parents had provided a list of over 100 books thus far. That list grows every day. The board has also been aware of that list for over six months. Our own superintendent lied and stated that these books have been on our shelves for years and are hardly checked out. These hundreds of books were added during the 2021 DEI audit, which you all had no problem acting on. If some boxes got checked off a list, they were good to be added, right? Who cares about what's in it, right? We didn't read them, we just put them in. He even offered parental advice as to how all parents who are concerned should simply talk to their kids and explain that they aren't allowed to read the books. Who knew it was that simple? If you dealt with children any length of time, you would know that telling any child not to do something is a surefire way to get them to do it. How about you do not give parenting advice and instead focus on their actual academic education? Ms. Morrissey again chimed in, stating that the attention being given to these books is, quotes, "benefiting" because they can't find them anywhere to purchase, laughing about it and seeming to be happy that such books are being purchased. None of the parents who have been forced to buy them to vet them for you all, who you didn't vet them for, have had any trouble finding them to buy. Another intriguing tidbit was when Wes McCall learned that there are quite literally no guidelines.
She can't. No, she can't call out the board members.
She's stating facts. She did not.
I'm not defaming. I'm simply stating that was actually something that happened in a video.
I think she's stating facts.
And I'd like some time back, please. You can give me time back.
Excuse me, we're going to give you your time back, and you're continuing with your statement and you're stating facts. I understand, and please continue.
Thank you, and I have my time back. Thank you. "Tidbit, Wes McCall learned that there are quite literally no guidelines for book selection, none. It's a free-for-all. No policy to add them or remove them, so why not take them all out?" After watching the video of the March 8th work session, one must ask if you all forget that those sessions are recorded. Do you think the public who elected you won't watch? Your actions were wildly unprofessional and disrespectful. I'd just like to ask the board some questions, just who do you think you are? Now, because you didn't do your job and review these hundreds of books, it is now on us to do your job. No. Because you all are dragging your feet on pulling these books for a more thorough audit...
We gave you your time back. Our next speaker is Brooke Damron.
We have to stop sugarcoating this and call this what it is. This is the sexualization of children, and some people would have you to believe that this has to do with infringing on LGBT rights. However, those are wrong. What we are fighting for is the removal of pornographic material from the schools, and I'm not sorry to say, whether you're gay or straight, if you are okay with children being exposed to sexually explicit content, then you are a pedophile. I mean, you would have to be. Why else would you not be eager to remove these kind of books unless you get a thrill knowing children are reading it? Also, I think a lot of people will agree with me when I say that Mr. Burden has to go. He has proven that he's incompetent to be super attendant and has no idea what he is doing. So we can see who the minority really is in this situation and vote you all out. Let's go, Burden.
All right. We haven't. All right, so at this point, I asked everybody to be respectful and show that we have different differences is okay. So what we're going to do is we're going to take a three-minute recess, and we will come back and we will start the next speaker. But what we need to do is we need to be mindful of each other, and we need to be respectful of each other, and that is my job as the board chair to make sure we are going to do it. All right? So let's take a two-minute, three-minute recess, just take a minute, but I cannot allow that kind of comments to continue. All right, we're going to call this back to order. I want to say that the beginning of our public participation process, I want to thank those speakers who are very respectful to our rules and guidelines. Thank you very much for that. I think that moving forward, the expectation's going to be the same. We're going to be respectful for each other. I am going to also ask that you don't call out any board member by name and that you don't make any direct comment to them so that we all feel respectful, all right? So we all have to feel respectful. I am a huge support of public participation, and I actually learn and listen from each person because everybody has a different view, even if I don't agree with it. But I'm respectful to that person. There's a lot of people that have to have the confidence... There's a lot of people that have to have the confidence to come up here and speak tonight, and then it's turned around into being negative to them, and so I can't allow that as board chair. And, you know, we do have the option to empty this room and have the public participation individuals come here one by one, but I don't think that proves anything because we're not learning anything because we're not listening to people. And so it is going to be my expectation moving forward that we will follow these rules. All right? So I think that the last speaker, and I could be wrong because I didn't mark it off and I apologize, is Allison Cohen, the next speaker? Okay, I'm sorry then. Michael Gaggen?
Oh, no. She did not speak.
So.
Brooke Damron.
Brooke Damron. That's who spoke, right?
Brooke already spoke. My name is Allison Cohen.
Allison Cohen is who I have on my list. So Allison, thank you.
Shame on you. Despite being informed of child pornography in our schools, you have allowed it to remain. You are now responsible for providing sexually explicit pornographic material to our children. This is not a select few books. If you would have conducted a full and independent audit as requested by many Forsyth County citizens, you would see that there are over one hundred books not appropriate for children. I'm not here standing against authors based on their gender, their race, nor their sexual orientation. I stand before you concerned about the content of these books. Let's provide books with the values that Forsyth County schools believes. Are your values to exploit children? Who are you to provide our children with pornographic filth? Get this activism out of our schools. What depraved mind would think that it is okay to expose children to such things? Let children be children. Schools are meant to be educational, to teach academics, not activism. This corruption will not remain in our schools. This complacency will be a stain on your career. You will be known as those no better than sex offenders who have provided pornography to children unless you put a stop to this madness now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Gaggen.
As a father and a parent and a Catholic youth pastor here since 2005 in this county, I'd like to begin by saying, quoting one of the board members from the beginning of this meeting who said, "We need to rise above politics and think about those who are devastated by destruction." You mentioned that about Ukraine, but it could be also said about the children's hearts and minds here in our county. For many months now, concerned parents have been expressing their concerns and problems with the accessibility of porn material in our schools. It's my understanding that the first and primordial right of education of children belongs to the parents. That means that any organization, elected or not, has a responsibility to listen and follow the wishes of the parents that they represent. I saw the video of the board member sitting in an enclosed session discussing porn books in the classroom and laughing about it as if you were getting your kicks, either reading child porn or at the thought of exposing it to our children against the very wishes of the parents you claim to represent. Some of the people in this room might call us bigots for trying to protect our children from pornography. I saw a sign here that said, "Ban bigots, not porn," because they do that because they want to objectify the person, demean us so that they can dismiss us. Giving teens porn doesn't teach equality, it teaches them lust. Study after study has shown, and I have evidence, I have research here to prove that, study after study has shown that the earlier child is exposed to porn, the greater the struggles and heartache they will face as adults. Pornography changes the mind, destroys the person's ability to function and love in a truly vulnerable and honest way. It is one of the leading causes of divorce, it is addictive as meth and as destructive as the worst drugs. Porn is essentially wrong because of its message. It rips sexuality from its relational context and presents human beings not as creatures made in God's image but as sexual commodities, something to be bought and sold. Jesus Christ said in the scriptures, "This is my body given for you." Porn says, "This is her body taken by me." Porn desensitizes the brain to pleasure, hypersensitizes it to lust, cripples the willpower, and destroys human spirits in relationships. Studies have shown that seventy-one percent of men who do not engage in porn support women's rights, yet forty-eight percent of many men who regularly use porn supports women's rights. And yet twenty-five percent of men who aggressively use porn, only twenty-five percent of men who use porn aggressively support women's rights. Porn destroys any concept of human dignity. It encourages rape and is fueling the epidemic of human trafficking. It's reprehensible that you have thus far ignored us and continue to ignore, encourage the destruction of our families and community. Make no mistake, you will be held accountable for your actions come election day, unless, of course, you copy Biden's playbook for winning elections. And further, come judgment day, you will face your maker. All, we all must do so. I pray for your souls on that frightful day. I pray that you wake up to the evil you are perpetuating upon our families and change your hearts and the course of your actions. Finally, when it comes to all these woke arguments encouraging transgenderism, homosexual activity, et cetera, it must be noted that every argument ever made in the defense of encouraging those sins are based in emotional desires and fleeting passions, never in science and fact. And you would do well to recognize the truth of the human person created by God who doesn't make mistakes.
Thank you.
If you call yourselves Christians...
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ed Sully. Ed Sully?
Sitting in the front row.
Yeah, I couldn't, I didn't see my name, so I just took an open seat. All right, thank you for having me. I want to take a little different approach today. I know this is an emotionally charged topic, but one thing I haven't heard actually discussed is the actual law that governs this topic. So I'm going to read from it now, Title sixteen, Chapter twelve, Section one oh three of the Georgia law. "It shall be unlawful for any person knowingly to sell or loan for monetary consideration or otherwise furnish or disseminate to a minor any picture, photograph, drawing, sculpture, motion picture film, or similar visual representation or image of a person or portion of the human body which depicts sexual explicit nudity, sexual content, or sadomasochistic abuse and which is harmful to minors, or any book, pamphlet, magazine, printed matter however reproduced, or sound recruiting which contains any matter enumerated in Paragraph one of this section, or explicit and detailed verbal descriptions or narrative accounts of sexual excitement, sexual conduct, or sadomasochistic," that's a hard word to read, "abuse in which, taken as a whole, is harmful to minors." So that's the laws on obscenity in Georgia. Now, in nineteen eighty-four, because a, the internet wasn't invented, wasn't readily available, not invented, readily available, it was hard for librarians to actually keep these things out, so they wrote in this clause, and this is, "This provision of Code Section sixteen twelve one oh three shall not apply to any public library operated by the state or any of its political subdivisions, nor to any library operated as a part of any school, college, or university." So that is bad law. That is law from nineteen eighty-four that should not be dictating decisions made today. The law that dictates obscenity is what eventually will be the law again for public schools. Now that this is a known issue and people are aware of these library exemptions, you can bank that that's going to go away. My recommendation would be to do a full audit based on the obscenities clause, not the library exemptions clause, because expect that people will eventually be punished for disseminating these books. These books all fall under that category, and they all should not be distributed to minors, and people who distribute them to minors should be going to jail. I know that this law, written in nineteen eighty-four, created complacency in the library system. I don't blame you for thirty years' worth of complacency in the library system. What I do ask is that moving forward, you be aware of where the law is headed, and just because there's a exemption written in the law doesn't mean you have to take advantage of it. You can still follow the law as written without the exemption. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Allison Hare.
I do have copies, Sandy. You guys remember me from last time, right?
Welcome back.
Thank you. And I really do mean that, thank you. You've got a different person here tonight. You've got a mother begging, begging you all to do something. And if you don't, then you know what? You've all got those readings. Take them home and read them to each of your children. Read them to your mother. Read them to your pastor because it is sickening. And my First Amendment rights I am invoking right now, and the, the, you all are going to hear what our children are hearing in books. And don't stop me because I've just invoked, and by the way, I don't have the BJ word, don't worry, but I'm telling you, you're going to hear me out. I'm done. I am having to make a different school choice for my child based on the unethical behavior of this board. So I will start. "We push back together, feeling the warmth and silk of each other's skin. Our breaths are coming faster and harder. My mouth circles the soft skin of my breasts and I cry, arching up into her," don't even, "or arching up into her. I flip over again, shriveling her. I kiss my way down her breastband. I am, I'm taking each nipple lightly between my teeth."
Ms. Hare, do you know if this book has been submitted for review? Because we do have a review process.
It is in your library!
Has that book, has that book been submitted to the principal? So it is the principal, right?
You are actually impacting my time, and it's disgusting.
I'm sorry, I can't ask you to continue, ma'am.
And I take my pants down and I kiss down the front of my stomach.
Our principal informed my daughter. She gave him...
No, we can't. So look, look, we are, understand, we hear you. We hear you, okay? So I have not laughed at you. I have not laughed at a single person, okay? And so I respect you.
And why will you not, and I want my three minutes back. Why will you not let me read this? Why? Why?
I am not done.
Why?
I have not lied. Look, I am done.
Why? Oh, oh, believe me, I'm done.
All right. All right, this is, this is unacceptable, okay? We have tried and tried to listen to you.
All of you should be ashamed.
Are you going to continue with following our rules or do you need to be removed?
I'm not breaking the rule.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I gave you a copy of your own rules, and I did not see anything negatory, defamatory, anything else. So why are you asking me?
Reading the book.
Because you don't like the filth that you've let in our libraries?
It has nothing to do with that. It has the fact that we have guidelines. We have guys. All right, that's it. We're having a second recess. I'm going to ask that we empty this room. And I want to thank you for coming back and speaking. It is very important that we listen to each one of you, even if we have to do it in a room.
It's not fair that they clear everybody for someone that kind of got out of...
Everybody was warmed.
I think it should be removed and then leave everybody, but, so my three, three minutes I've got?
You please.
Okay, all right. So, hi, my name is Ms. Neri. I moved to Forsyth County twenty-two years ago from Cuba. My wife and I had to learn English, felt very welcome in this county. People seemed to talk a lot about racism and all kinds of stuff and diversity and inclusion and all that. I never had any of those problems. I've always felt very, very welcome, including the people who actually helped me learn English. But anyway, I have four kids in the school systems, and my wife was the one that brought up because she stays home and I work, and she brought up to my attention the whole thing with education that has been going on in these books and all that. And growing up in Cuba, where a society where the government rules whatever goes in the schools, a lot of wrong things were being taught as I was growing up, and that can have a lot of consequences on the future of the kids. Not to, anything to do with a specific matter of these books, but in Cuba, we were taught that abortion was a normal thing because it didn't, it wasn't alive, it wasn't anything. Science, according to them, said it was just okay. I have a sister-in-law who actually could not have kids after so many abortions because it was a normal thing for them to have it. So anyway, it's important to always know that whatever we are being taught, our kids in the school, is going to affect their future. It really affected the future of my sister-in-law because she was brought up by the education teaching the wrong things. And, and I think it's important that we focus on that and ignore all the other noise, ignore Forsyth County doesn't have any problems of discrimination or inclusiveness. All my four kids feel very inclusive and very welcome in the schools, and I would just wish it would continue to be that way. And if books that are teaching inappropriate things need to be removed, go on, remove them and make things better. That's, that's all I got to say about that. That's Forsyth County's, yeah.
This is videoed so people can see. I'm sure a lot of people watched the meeting, so you will be heard.
Thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate it very much. Thank you for your time and very grateful to Forsyth County.
Thank you. Mr. Keller?
Good morning, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hey, Larry, how are you?
I'm pretty darn good. Here goes a guy who bases himself on hard copies, so it's going to be me talking with you and if I had anything to say, wait a minute, before we do anything, don't start a clock on me right now. I just want to say that it sounds crazy, but I think you're all underpaid except for the Mr. Superintendent, no disrespect to you. I do mean that because I know exactly what you make income-wise, and the job is so important. It shouldn't be a part-time job. Either that, or you, it could be part-time, but bump it up because it's just not realistic.
We're, we're, thank you, thank you for that.
Fine, and so that's not on script. It means a lot.
We'll start your time right now.
Okay, give me, give me, give me a moment, okay? So, all right, folks, it's, it's really short, but I'm going to say this very quickly. I'm born and raised in the city of Philadelphia. I went to a school called Thaddeus Stevens School. How many of you know who Thaddeus Stevens is? Raise your hand. Okay, two, three of you do know Thaddeus Stevens. My mom put me there because it was one of the best schools in the, in the city of Philadelphia. I was, it's eighty percent black, twenty percent white, and it was an excellent school for one reason. What they did was, as retired teachers, the best of crop of the graduates were put in there to replace that retiree. She chose that school, and I took forty-five minutes by tri-way car to get to the darn place. A little bit of background on me, but I'm here on a very serious matter, and that serious matter has to do with, I do believe that D E I is indoctrination and it's something that troubles me significantly. I want to talk about books that I'm very well aware of in this discussion. I want to talk about the superintendent for a moment who worked closely with, I hope I pronounce her name properly, and that's Jennifer Caracchio. Do I say that rightly? Close enough? Well, under the superintendent, D E I got its wings over these last three or four years. We've moved down, back here to Georgia for personal reasons, after living up in Asheville, and I'm not a person that just watches the life go by. So I started to dig into, see what was going on education-wise, and I was troubled by what I read. When D E I, and I'm very well aware of it by reading other books, not the ones that people may be digging into, but it was, it was Jennifer Chiacolo who went out to solicit books and types of books for the teachers. The teachers cried out to her and said, "Could you send us books that we could read to understand what D E I is all about?" And so let me give you an idea, some examples of what they did under Jennifer's suggestion, well, response. Books like The Blind Spot, Hidden Biases of Good People. Anybody aware of that book? Apparently not, okay. It addresses age, gender, race, ethnicity, religion, social class, sexuality, disability, status, or nationality. Forget the sexuality part. Already, okay, I'm getting a yellow flag already, and then I'm going to move forward very, very quickly and say that the books that I listed here in my presentation include books where there were black things going on here, like in nineteen ten in Forsyth County. A great book. Malcolm X, I have no time for, and Killing Rage by Ben Hooks, and then when I submitted to Kristin, some books that I wanted to see in the library here, by Hemingway, by Steinbeck, by Mark Twain and so forth, because if you take a look at Mark Twain, you'll hear the word...
Thank you.
...in there.
I hear you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
For your time, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to give you a copy. Now you do.
Have a good evening.
Thank you for your service.
Good evening.
Good evening, board members. My name is Anvita Satchdeva, and I'm a junior at Alliance Academy for Innovation. And today, I'm here to talk to you on the topic of the recent... And today, I'm here to talk to you on the topic of the recently banned books. I've been reading books since I was around eight years old, when I became obsessed with Harry Potter. I've been reading since then. In fact, three out of the four shelves built into my desk are filled only with books that relatives have sent me on birthdays. In the last eight years that I have been reading, I feel like I've grown as a person because of the various stories that I've been, that I have exposed myself to. But not only that, I felt like I've become more educated as well as aware of issues happening in my community as well as globally. Reading other people's stories, whether it was fiction or nonfiction, has taught me so much and how we can get so wrapped up in our own lives that we don't even care to see or wonder what's going on in other people's lives. Books have shown me perspective. Perspective that I may have never understood if I didn't read. This is why awareness in books is something that is very important and should not be censored. The whole point of authors writing books with controversial topics is to create discussion. On top of this, these books have representation for many different minority groups. 27% of the authors are openly queer, 72% women, and 45% people of color. By banning these books, those voices that are already so suppressed are being silenced further. These books focus on topics such as gender, sexuality, racism, homophobia, things that we are not generally educated about in a classroom setting. How are the people in the majority supposed to know they're privileged if they don't realize such things exist? The root of the problem when it comes to things such as racism or homophobia is not being educated enough, is not being educated enough about why those things are wrong. Your job as our Board of Education members is to listen to students. And here's what all of us are saying. These books should not be banned. Censorship has no place in the education system. The education system is supposed to educate us to be better human beings and more tolerant to the differences we all have. I understand that a lot of the topics discussed in these books, such as sexual assault, can be uncomfortable for people. They can even trigger some people. However, the level of comfortability should be up to the reader. The reader should be able to assess how okay they feel reading a book that contains a certain topic and make the decision of whether they want to read it or not. By banning these books, you are suppressing people's desire to learn and educate themselves. As someone who is considered a minority in multiple groups, I want the stories of what I have faced out there. I want people to use my experiences as a way to learn and educate themselves about what we have to face on a day-to-day basis. I can only request you to please consider unbanning these books as they hold a very important place, not just in libraries, but in the growth of students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, before I begin, I'm really sorry for interruption earlier. It's terrible that you have to. Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Shivie Meta and I'm a current freshman at, at Alliance Academy. My pronouns are she/her. It's so easy to find a library book with a white protagonist, but not a book with a minority protagonist. Students like me do not see themselves in library books even though we deserve to be represented just like cisgender heterosexual white people. Removing books written by people that are minorities like me, uh, it removes representation which ultimately hurts us. There are many students with parents not supportive of their identities or them learning about people who are LGBTQIA+. Further, many students, uh, parents of students are uncomfortable with their students learning about systemic racism. So, removing books from libraries effectively, effectively removes these students' access to information that they may want, they may want to access at home, but cannot due to their unsupportive environment. This is blatant censorship and it's absolutely vile that we encourage this in our schools. Many topics like in these books make people uncomfortable and that's absolutely okay. We need to have these uncomfortable discussions, discussions to help issues in our societies. We need to discuss issues such as sexual assault. One in nine girls are sexually assaulted before the age of 18. 66% of victims of sexual assault and rape are between ages 12 to 17. The very books that you, the board members, have banned facilitate these discussions. To ban these books is to shut down these discussions and perpetuate rape culture. I said this last month and I'll say it again, rape and sexual assault, rape, sexual assault, and rape and sexual assault are not the same as sex. Members of the board, please, stop censoring our libraries. Not everyone can go out and buy books for a variety of reasons, whether it be financial barrier or something else. These, these people deserve to read freely. Further, silencing accounts of sexual assault and rape does not help these issues. I do not ask for much. All I ask is for, is that people are, be, are allowed to express themselves in the field of literature. Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. No, 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 we'll start when we get here, don't worry. No, hopefully not.
Uh, my name's Tim Coffey. So, uh, one of the things about going last is that everybody takes up your material, right? So, I want to set up your.
Are you last?
What's that?
You're not last.
Uh, well, go, well, towards the end.
Oh, toward the end.
How about that, okay? I want my two seconds back, but anyway.
Absolutely.
So, um, you know, you start regurgitating a lot of things you hear over and over again. Well, uh, you know, one of the, the same things I'm hearing are, you know, that, you know, books are not going to fall off the library shelf into, into kids' hands. Well, I have, I have a 13-year-old daughter at home. And we, we deny her access to social media for a number of reasons. Is that one time, it's only takes that one post or that one TikTok or whatever, that one video to give them access to adult situations, give them access to situations that they're not ready for, all right? And, and so now we're having adult conversations. Now, again, the book is not going to fall off into their lap, it's gonna open up to the page that we're all offended by, but kids share things, right? Because my daughter still sees some of these TikTok posts, unfortunately, because other parents allow their kids to do it. Other parents, uh, even in church, at school, it doesn't, you know, there are no guidelines sometimes. So, my daughter is, um, um, this is available for her to see. And, and you know, when, when we have kids, I've heard this before, kids do foolish things with great enthusiasm, right? Because they, you remember being young, you do the, you do these things over and over again and you don't, and especially, somebody had said that earlier, that you tell them not to do it, they're going to do it, right? That's the first thing. I know I did and maybe I'm a minority here, but, you know, we, we, we have a, a country, a county, a room here that, I mean, we don't have, we have irreconcilable, uh, definitions on justice, happiness, goodness, right? But, you know, one of the things that I see here, and I don't know if you guys see this or not, but this is like a bad Twitter feed, right? I mean, you, you, we come up here and we're, we're taking punches at each other. You have, you have members of the audience out here playing bingo with, with, uh, the conservatives, right? And seeing if they're not listening. You, you, like you said, uh, when we came back, you said, "But you, let's take time to listen." And, and you can listen, you, you can tell somebody something, you've heard this before, but you can't make them understand it. You, you can't, you can't make them process it in the way that you think that you can, all right? But these things are important to us as parents. We are the ones that want to safeguard our kids. We want to have that ability. And we're not here as taxpayers to fund anything that is sexually explicit to these kids. And so, you know, I, I just want to, I, I just want to say that, like, I wish that we could have more of a town hall. I know that's gonna get crazy if these things get crazy, but, you know, some of these things just don't have immediate feedback. You need, we don't have these things, we have to wait 30 days or we have to listen to, you know, these working sessions to see what you guys are going to do. But, you know, the, you, the, the comments we're addressing, the working sessions, you know, they, they're a little patronizing, I would agree, you know? And I'm not gonna name the names of the people who did it, but, you know, we do our best as parents, but the outside world is closing in. I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey.
Yes, thank you. No, you're fine. No, you're fine, you're fine.
We won't start the timer until you're ready.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Dr. Holly Verona, your friendly neighborhood therapist. Um, and I'm just here to give a voice to a Forsyth County educator by reading a letter on their behalf. Um, as a teacher in Forsyth County schools, I used to take pride in my job. I felt supported by administrators, superintendent, and you, the Board of Education. The discussion around diversity, equity, and inclusion was the first time I saw the district bow to the pressure of outside voices. Development of social emotional skills was questioned next. Now, books are being removed from classrooms like mine because of this small group of people. They come to these meetings and have emotional outbursts while reading a very small part of a book. This isn't about an agenda we're trying to hide. We have always been transparent. We're not taking away any rights, if anything, we're trying to engage them in their child's education. How many attended curriculum night? How many went to a parent-teacher conference that wasn't required? Maybe they need to be as involved as parents as they are as being a mouthpiece. The removal of books was a direct violation of Forsyth County school policy. When asked to look at all 500,000 books in the Forsyth County school libraries, our superintendent avoided the approved media review process that makes sure professionals like me give input into titles that ordinary citizens question. We are trained about the students' intellectual freedom and constitutional rights because the students have rights to. Members of the media review committee know the contribution the book can make to the students who read them. All that was taken from the students with the permission of the superintendent. Teachers are too afraid to speak, which is why someone else will read this to you. The people responsible for ensuring a safe work environment are the ones destroying it. I worry that I won't have a job in the fall because you continue to support increasingly divisive issues in order to allow a group of people from being uncomfortable. These concerned people show us the need for social emotional understanding. Their outbursts demonstrate an inability to regulate themselves. They choose to stand up here fixating on a few lines from a book rather than to talk to their child's teacher or media specialist. They snicker when a student gives their pronouns. They whisper that these well-spoken students are misguided and don't know who they are. They're showing us how they would treat a gay child. My job is to help prepare all students for the challenges they will face as they go into the world. What they will encounter is not always comfortable. If we sanitize education to appease people, when we do, when we do expect our students to get the skills needed to approach and understand the complex ideas and the emotions they bring up. If you continue to bow to the noise of the unprofessional people, where does it leave me, the professional, and the students you're elected to protect? Teachers want out of Forsyth County schools. The district has become a laughingstock. I have other teachers telling me they would never work in Forsyth County schools. And judging from the significantly low attendance at recent job fair, they are not alone. People do not become teachers for the money.
Thank you, thank you for your time. Yeah, the three minutes is up, I'm sorry.
I didn't see the rest. I was trying to use my periphery, I didn't see it.
No, but thank you very much for your time tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
I am Lauren Padgett and I'm a freshman at Denmark High School, reading a letter from a concerned FCS educator. To Dr. Bearden and the FCS Board of Education, I have been employed by Forsyth County schools as a teacher for 13 years. I believe that Forsyth County schools as a system has failed to place the needs of its students above politics and demands of misinformed, bigoted parents and community members. Rather than progressing in a manner that keeps pace with growing diversity of our community, it is backsliding into antiquated practices and narrow-minded views that harm our students. In the fall of 2020, educators came back to schools in the middle of a pandemic to, however, FCS failed to keep us all as safe as possible. Instead, the district relented to a subgroup of parents who put politics before the well-being of children of Forsyth. One positive from that year was that as a school staff, we began talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion at our weekly team meetings. The district pushed out weekly messages about the importance of DEI in our schools. We had rich, important discussions about examining our own biases and the need for greater acceptance of our students of different backgrounds. Then, a subgroup of parents and community members cried foul once again and FCS administration complied with their demands. As a result, DEI initiatives were taken off the table with no explanation to educators, let alone allowing feedback from school staff. This school year, the decision was made to take books off of media center shelves under the guise of removing sexually explicit material. Further, teachers were told not to read books of their own choosing for fear it might offend some students. Parents who are uncomfortable with LGBTQ students who sit in classrooms with their own children were behind this decision. My first duty as an educator is to do what is best for my students regardless of their race, gender, or sexual orientation. I must be supported by my team at school, my administrators, and at the system level. I strongly believe that the system has led us all down in the areas I have described. As a result, I have come to the decision that I cannot remain within the district for the long term. I am now seeking employment outside this district where I feel my desire for all students to be represented and valued or better supported. I ask that you reconsider instituting DEI initiatives and actively promote the acceptance of all students regardless of their racial backgrounds, gender preference, or sexual orientation. Stop taking books off of media center shelves. We must put the needs of all our students ahead of politics, move forward, and do what is best for students. Thank you, a concerned FCS educator.
Thank you for your time tonight. Good evening.
Before my time officially begins, I did want to say, I do recognize that you do not have an easy job. You can't win for losing oftentimes, but it is, make it, does make it important that past history does not repeat. So, with my official time. Forsyth County keeps amazing historical records. Even with its dark parts, you don't have to dig far to find countless examples of how this community valued family, education, educators, civic duty, and came together in past adversities. Times did, times that they did do the right thing despite, despite political wins or popularity factor. And they didn't quit because it was hard or inconvenient or because they were being asked to make personal sacrifices for their community. Success wasn't measured by, "Well, it's only X% negatively affected." Yeah, yes, no, it was shame on us. We need to do more because one death is one too many. Your pain is my pain, your loss is my loss. They course corrected when they knew they needed to, take kudzu. Seemingly benign and once thought to be the miracle erosion solution, the government actually paid farmers to plant it. The county eventually switched to better methods, but here we all are decades later, still dealing with the negative long-term consequences. Dedicated doctors worked themselves to exhaustion during the 1918 flu pandemic, taking care of this community, contracting the flu themselves and being out of commission for weeks. The value of education, public health, and serving one's community is illustrated by the very names on Forsyth County school facilities. Mashburn, Lambert, Denmark, Hill, the list goes on. Educators and doctors who prided themselves on the care of this community, teaching students, challenging young minds, and preparing the next generation. Even then, teachers were called to go above and beyond. In World War II, they were asked to facilitate distribution of ration books, train victory corps troops, and expected to teach at whatever school had need despite distance. They still stepped up to do the impossible even if it was to their detriment and even though they had little choice if they wanted to keep their job, just like now. There's a story shared by the aunt of one of the board members about how her childhood memories were not of 4th of July every year, but of the great-grandmother India Sexton's birthday. Family would arrive and Mother Sexton would be standing on the back porch with arms stretched out waiting to embrace them. Surely wished she could share the smell of her favorite meal, cabbage fat-backed meat and cornbread being cooked with her children. And lastly, the belief that your pain is my pain, your joys are my joys. When rationing really ramped up in March of 1943, Forsyth County News Editor-in-Chief, Roy P. Otwell, took homefront slackers to task, reminding the community, quote, "That you may expect the usual crop of complaints. They will come from the same people who've grumbled about every previous regulation." Homefront slackers, regulation cheaters, will be denounced, detested, and degraded," end quote. The further sentiment being that community should neither suffer because of nor tolerate personal selfishness. Then there's your legacy. It's true, yours is not an easy job, but you are failing to do so, but you are failing to do even the bare minimum of mandated masks. And by current data, you have condemned upwards to 2,000 children and more than 100 teachers to deal with the lifetime negative effects of long-haul COVID, just like kudzu. You ignore the very scientific principles and public health disease prevention measures that doctors like Marcus Mashburn lived by and are now taught in the high school medical career pathways. Over 300 families have been cheated of their future memories of warm embraces and meals shared because of family members who are dead to the lack of action. You're becoming the homefront slacker.
Thank you for your, for your time tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, it is.
So I'm just changing some stuff up.
Please.
So, Cindy Martin, I just wanted, I saw your code of ethics, so I just wanted to remind you to seek regular and systemic communication among the community, because that will help really a lot with what is going on. So I'll be reading an excerpt from a book at Coming Elementary, okay? So how bad can it be, right? Six to ten-year-olds coming elementary. "What are pasties?" Kathy asked. In a talk-show voice, Leslie responded, "Stu-Nite, the perfect cover." "What other secrets lie hidden in the heart of this mysterious young girl?" "What are pasties?" Kathy demanded. "Those shiny things striptease dancers wear on their boobs. Sometimes they have tassels. Are you going to get some pasties? That's exactly what I'm going to do. Probably hot pink ones, and one of those G-string things, too, to go with it. Strippers are supposed to be pretty. People have to want to see what's underneath. Hey, are you going to get a job at the Pussycat Palace? Then you could get paid to take off your undies." Elementary school, okay? You guys, elementary school. I know you don't want this in there. I just know it. Contrary to what Dr. Bearden says, this book is currently checked out. Then, once we get into the middle school books, it's full-blown porn, including sex shops, sex toys, masturbation, biting nipples, orgasms, graphic raw sex, anal sex, oral sex, all kinds of sex, any sex. I watched the March eighth work session and was disappointed in the remarks. It was stated that parents who have brought these books to light have made the problem worse. I'm highly offended by this statement, and so is every parent who worked tirelessly researching the books in our libraries to keep our children safe, to keep our children safe from content so pornographic that you would not let us read it here, content so pornographic it could be placed in an online porn site, and no one would know it actually came from a children's book. For a board member to say that parents are the problem rather than porn is offensive, and we deserve an apology. This administration approved these books, and it's your job to remove them. Parents will not be sending in hundreds of book review forms. It's your job to provide a safe environment for our kids. We've made you aware of these books. We have presented lists and examples, specific examples over and over again. We've offered solutions. We've been patient, and I believe you are good people. I really, really do. But your inaction will be a dark stain on this board and the superintendent who leads this administration. This is an election season, and parents will now turn our attention to replacing the board and ultimately replacing the superintendent.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
How are you guys?
Good.
Hey, guys. My name is Jim Stewart, and I'm a realtor and have been in Forsyth for seventeen years. And I am so proud to be one of the men speaking tonight. And I am so proud of living in Forsyth County. I have lived in DeKalb, Gwinnett, Fulton, and this is by far the best government I've seen. But I must say I'm very disturbed by what is happening in my grandkids' school system. They are in elementary and middle school. I attended the meeting last month for the first time, and I was appalled at what I had heard. At the last meeting, a parent was chastised for reading directly from books with words and subject matter. The chairman said these were inappropriate for people in this room, yet y'all deemed it appropriate for young kids and teens in this school. What the heck are y'all talking about? Common sense would indicate that you are not fulfilling your promise to parents, children, and the community. Pornography is not appropriate for any child. Would y'all not agree with this? I know you can't nod, but I'm sure y'all do, since y'all are good folks. Since y'all are allowing these books, why don't you allow Playboy and Hustler magazines? The last time I looked at one, which was a long time ago, they are not as pornographic as these books. Your child has access to read about the pornography in these books, whether heterosexual, bisexual, or any sexual pornography. It is not healthy. Would this be okay with your child? I dare y'all to ask them tonight. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Have a good evening. Good evening.
Hi, guys. I'm Cindy Kaczerski. Being a Rotary Board member, I have many Rotary members and community leaders thanking me for speaking up to get these pornographic books out of our schools. As parents and community leaders are finding out what equity, inclusion, diversity, and social emotional learning is really is, they want it out of our schools. As a Rotarian, we provide hundreds of thousands of dollars for our youth in our communities each year. We provide driving simulators in the high schools. We have driven, we have given to the moral family medicine to provide technologies for students. We just had Hendrix Middle School at our Rotary meeting asking us to fund activities for students, and also duck run, which we are happy to do. I wrote to the superintendent and board, asking for independent audit of pornographic books. They were to respond back to me within ten days, as per their own regulations. I was completely blown off with no response. This goes against their code of ethics. The superintendent and board have grown arrogant and forgotten who they have, they are serving. We are watching you and your behavior. Your minutes of your last meeting show all of you laughing at our request. You have absolutely no respect for parents and community leaders and who provide for schools. This is how you treat us? You have no intention of doing anything we ask. We have been doing every, we will be doing everything in our power to remove Mr. Bearden and the board members from positions and replace them with people who are not elitist and care about our community they serve. The people on this board lack morals, values, and integrity. You have lost the trust of this community. The whole community is watching you. And the Rotary motto is, is it truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? These are things you need to ask yourselves, because I find, find you very disappointing. And for three hundred grand a year.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you. All right, so that is the end. Is that correct, Ms. Young? All right, so that is the end of public participation. The next item on the agenda is points of information. Do you have any information to share today?
I do. I went to AI today to do the mock trials. Mock interviews. They, oh, sorry. Those kids blew me away. I was so impressed. I had five interviews, I think, and they were awesome. They really were so prepared, and so the CTA, they're doing a great job with them.
I go tomorrow morning at eight-thirty.
I go tomorrow morning, too. It's great.
All right. Any other information anybody would like to share? All right. So is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel and student education records? So moved by Ms. Adams, second by Ms. White. All in favor? All right, it's unanimous. We'll go into executive session. Do we have a motion to come out of the executive session?
Second.
So moved by Ms. Morrissey, second by Mr. Cleveland. All in favor? Do we have a motion to approve Personnel A. one through twelve, C. one through twenty-two?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland? Second by Ms. Lindsay Adams. All in favor? It's unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting tonight?
So moved.
So moved by, no, no student. So moved by Ms. White, second by Ms. Adams. All in favor? This meeting is adjourned.